Good evening, everyone. It's 6:10. I want to thank my friend back there. He said, "Yo, we late." And we were getting everything organized. I'd love to say we were paying a jackpot or something, but y'all would be jealous because it wouldn't have been anyone in this room. I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting. I'm honored to be a part of an incredible group of folks. The broader transition group has met a number of times. We call ourselves TAB, Transition Advisory Board. And I know at some point the mayor will unveil the name of our final report, but I can tell you that I'm humbled that this has been a citizen-led initiative. And there are a number of different topics that have been discussed. And there are members from other groups in this room, and we'll recognize in a moment. But the mayor has approached essentially every facet of city government. And the importance of citizen-led cannot be overstated. This is not a plan that was created in a room and then called a citizen plan. The hard work was actually put in. And if I could, I want to begin, there is at least one leader of another transition group in the room. If I can get you to stand up and just introduce yourself and tell folks what you're doing, even though this isn't your town hall today. And I will tell you, we met Sunday night. And I want to apologize in front of everybody. I kept stepping on you because your findings were so fascinating. And I cannot wait for that to be rolled into the mayor's report. But thank you for coming this evening. Also, if I could, the folks who are working with us on tourism and nature, if you could please just stand up and give everyone your name, so folks who know who've been directly working. Jimmy, you're first, as always. Angela keeps me on my toes. Jennings? And I'd like to welcome the woman of the hour, Mayor Vivian Flowers, who's walking in. Thank you so much. And Chief Campbell, thank you also for keeping us on our toes. So I want to begin by, yes. Oh, I missed you, Sherri. I figured you weren't sitting down. Go ahead, Sherri. Everybody knows Sherri anyway, so you don't, you know. Well, everybody knows Sherri. Let's talk for a minute about the scope of work we were assigned. So our organization was asked to assess the city's current tourism assets, including cultural landmarks, parks, and recreational facilities, and develop strategies to attract visitors and enhance the city's reputation as a desirable destination. And let's talk about that for a minute. Because enhancing the city's reputation is something that we are heavily focused on. And it's one of the things that we are excited to hear from you all about this evening. One of the initiatives we've been working on is more broadly about the city's reputation and how things can be improved. But before I open up the questions, I want to speak for just a moment. And my desire is not to speak on behalf of the mayor or anyone else. I'm really speaking on behalf of myself and I think on behalf of what our committees discuss. But this idea of a return to yesterday's Pine Bluff, while it seems appealing, is a bit of a misconception. We happen to remember things in the past better than they tended to be. I think it's a coping mechanism God gives us, where we remember the good parts and sometimes forget the bad parts. And while Pine Bluff was certainly a wonderful place to live yesterday, it is a wonderful place to live today, and it will be an even better place to live tomorrow. So I often hear people talk about, "Oh, we want to go back to the way things were." You're only remembering the good parts of it, you know? So I understand where people are coming from when they say, you know, "We need this city to be great again. We want to make this city what it once was." Well, that implies that it's not something today. And so I want to hear a little bit about reputation and thoughts you have. Finally, I'll roll through this. Collaborate with local businesses, which we have done and will continue to do, event organizers, and tourism boards, which you well know between Land of Legends and me forgetting Sherri, that we've certainly done that, to work on things like ecotourism and outdoor recreation. Finally, propose initiatives to preserve and restore the city's natural environments like waterways, green spaces, and wildlife habitats, and develop campaigns to showcase the city's cultural and natural attractions. I want to tell you a little bit about what we have done to date, and then I want to hear what is on your mind. The first thing we did was we began with some data. And I know this is a Q and A, but I want to give you all a solid base so that you can build your questions or provide your input based upon where we've been. The first thing we did, and Sherri was great in providing it, we looked at the A and P tax numbers. A and P is advertising and promotion tax dollars. It's a great way to gauge, "How you doing?" How you doing? Not with grocery store sales or, you know, somebody going to the hardware store, but how are you doing on hotels and hamburgers? In fact, sometimes it's called a hamburger tax. And I want to tell y'all something you may not have realized. People think about...
...more in advertising and promotion revenue than the city of Eureka Springs? Surprised, y'all? I heard it there, right? I mean, if we got your attention. Rogers, Arkansas. Supposed to be a pretty nice place. I've been up there. Every time I go up there, they got a new chain restaurant. Did about $500,000 more than Rogers did in A and P taxes last year. In fact, I'm proud to tell you that while many cities are declining in terms of A and P tax revenue, for example, not to pick on anybody, Texarkana is down 8%. We're up year-over-year 2%. The year before that, we were up year-over-year 4%. So things are growing and rolling. We occupy a space just below Bentonville, Arkansas, on the top list of A and P. Why am I saying this? Because I hate low expectations. And if we can't first be proud of what we've got, how can we attract other folks to come here and enjoy what we have? So I wanted to open with that, just so you all would understand that it's not like we're starting with nothing. Not asking that we return to yesterday. We've got some incredible stuff. The infrastructure in this city is amazing. I drive it every day. 5:30 is perhaps the best highway in the state of Arkansas. It wasn't yesterday with the fire. But we have water, we have rail. We're going to talk about this in a minute. But we have an unmatched natural resource in the Bayou Bartholomew and an untapped reputation in my mind. And you can, I know we're on YouTube. To my friends in Stuttgart, you may claim you're the duck hunting capital of the world. But every time I duck hunted in Arkansas County this year, I got skunked. And I shot a lot of ducks in Jefferson County. So we've talked about the Bayou Bartholomew, and we'll talk about that more. We've talked about the Rhythm and Bayous District, which is so critical. And Rhythm and Bayous doesn't just touch music. It's living history. There's, Jimmy, what, four blocks there, give or take? That changed the world. Down the street. There are four blocks in Pine Bluff, Arkansas that changed the world. And they changed the world for civil rights and freedom seekers. It changed the world for music. And all of the things that that butterfly effect set off. How many songs originated there that became some couple's love song when they fell in love? How many folks' lives were changed because of what happened there? And we have an initiative to recognize, not one at a time, but all of the historical superlatives that have occurred there. Jimmy's been a great resource to me and one of my favorite people to talk to because, I don't know if you have people I guess in your life, I learned something every time I talked to him. Every single time. We talked about the tremendous opportunity you have with bicycling, and that is not to be overstated. Now, consider me originally a skeptic about bicycling. I thought, eh. But it has been transformative in Northwest Arkansas. And one thing we know about bicycling, folks, and I'm in the tourism and hospitality business, so trust me. Folks with bicycles tend to have money. And they will drive to bike. But it's not just that. You can go get yourself a Walmart bike and do this, what do they call it, gravel grinding? Have I got that right? That's a thing, and it's a big thing. And if you're a guy like me, then like hills, the one thing we have is flat land. And we have lots of opportunity in that space as well. I want to thank the Fishers in the back because they've done an incredible job of leading that initiative here. I grew up in a town in southwest Oklahoma, just north of Wichita Falls, that has a famous race called Hotter Than Hell that people all over the country know. By the way, I can't think of a worse name for a bicycle race. It's really hot. It's hotter than hell. Come ride your bike here, right? But it worked. And if we can outperform Eureka Springs and A and P revenue, I don't know why on earth we can't have the best bicycle event in the state here. And we have a plan to address that, too. We have a plan for Lake Saracen. And we even have a plan for essentially fixing what you see when you Google our town on the internet. But it begins with us. So thank you all, for those of you all who came tonight, because that's the first step is showing up. It's about half a life. But we've got to accept first that we have something awesome here. Quick story, and then I want to open it up to you all. An input from anyone. It's hard to be sort of a carnival barker and be humble. And I'm a little bit of a carnival barker. So every day, I say a little prayer about, "Lord, keep me humble." Because I'm just a casino guy. I don't even know how I got my job. I'm grateful, Lord, that I have it. But we've got great stuff going on, and I want to use our little business as an example. I won't name him because I don't want to embarrass him. But a dear friend who everyone in this room knows, who's a very prominent businessman in this community, asked me about two years ago, just like this. "Is the casino doing okay?" Kind of in the way you'd ask somebody whose mother was elderly, "How's your mom doing?" Like, you don't really know what kind of answer you're going to get. You're preparing for either one. I said, "We're killing it." He said... And I said, like sincerely. And I got out my phone, and the wonderful thing about being in our business, it's different than most businesses, is everything's publicly available. Through the penny, the slot revenue, the sports betting revenue, and everything. I'm proud to tell you that we were the number one casino in central Arkansas by revenue. Every month but one for the last 18. With a building without a hotel, without an event center, that basically would make a pretty good Lowe's, right? Just this big old warehouse-looking building, didn't even have a sign on it. It's blue. Jennings works there. It kind of looks like a Lowe's. We happened to be about 60% through a $250 million addition. Won't look like a Lowe's much longer. And this fall, probably sometime in November, we'll have the most luxurious hotel in the state in Pine Bluff. We already have the best restaurant in the state in Pine Bluff, four times named. This is not an ad about the casino. But I learned that if I didn't start telling people that this casino was killing it with a million visitors a year, and I didn't have to tell people in Little Rock, who by the way are about 70% of our customers, I had to tell people in this community that the business in this community was killing it, that changed things. So my only message, and then I'm going to shut up, is our own worst enemy, keeping us from being what we can become, is sometimes in the mirror or in the bed laying next to you or next door. There's a lot of communities that would trade places with us in a heartbeat. We're not going to lie. We don't have our problems. We don't have our flaws. Freckles are what make you human. But we got a bayou, we got interstate, we've got a bayou. We got it all. And we got a plan that I'm happy our group will have finalized in the next couple of days and put forward for Mayor Flowers' consideration. And we hope we can move forward with it. Mayor, I want, I should have done this a moment ago. Would you like to say a few words? Well, I just made all that up. I didn't have any notes. I hope. I got all these papers here. The only thing I looked at was that thing so I could dog on Eureka Springs. And I want to say again, I am humbled to be included in this list. It means, it meant the world to me when you invited me. I don't know. I think it makes me look thinner. It's real wide.
You can stand right here. I'm not going to be long. I'm happy to be here tonight. As many people know, we put this together in terms of the 10 committees. And it was a process determining what the committees would be. And as we, Chief, figured out how we were going to focus on tourism and nature, it made all the sense in the world. And even way back when I was trying to write out, "Well, what are my priorities going to be when I run?" It was very clear. That it was going to be investment in our youth, economic development with a specific focus on infrastructure and on tourism. Anybody who has listened to me just a little bit has known that I have talked a great deal about how we have to address our economy by first looking at our greatest challenges. One of our greatest challenges is the loss of the people. That is, that is our biggest asset. The people. It's the people who work, who raise families, who retire here, who play here. And if we are losing people by natural attrition, which is what it is, people are passing away, as people do, as part of life. People are taking advantage of opportunities to work someplace else or to go to school, and they don't come back. And then we don't have people migrating to Pine Bluff for jobs, for education, and staying, because we have a university, we have a two-year college, that's another two assets that are incredible. So tourism, because infrastructure is easy. That's what government's supposed to do. But tourism, you know, why tourism? And I heard a few people under their breath, and some had the nerve to quote, "Tourism? Pine Bluff? Yes, tourism in Pine Bluff."
We made a $550 million bet on it.
You did.
Sorry to cut you off.
It was a sure one.
Sorry to cut you off, but it's a good bet.
And I'll say this, it really wasn't a bet. It was an investment. It was an investment. And there are so many other businesses and government investment in attractions that we are not pouring into, that we're not looking at as our own assets. But this is the deal. While we still continue, you heard what the numbers are. You heard how we are competing even as we continue to lose population. As we continue to lose population, we are still competing. And as we figure out how to build back better, if I can borrow and coin a phrase of one of my favorite presidents, which will take time, how do we increase our revenue? Tourism. People who will come here, spend money, and go home. It's like grandma and grandpa life, right? Grandparents have the best of all worlds. They've lived their life. They're in retirement. The grandkids come, and the grandkids go home. Right? So that is why, in addition to infrastructure, tourism is so important. And we add nature to it because we have such an incredible nature infrastructure. We have the longest bayou in the world. I learned that from Jimmy Cunningham a little over 10 years ago. Didn't know it. And now, we have someone on Game and Fish Commission, Bill Jones, who is working with that commission to develop Bayou Bartholomew. We already have an incredible, and people don't know it, platform for bird watching. Who knew? Yes, people come to Pine Bluff to watch birds.
Lake Saracen ranks third in the state in bird watching.
Lake Saracen ranks third in the state for bird watching. So we have a lot to work with. I am so grateful for the people who have agreed to serve on this committee. We don't know everything, and it is when we work together that we what? We win. Thank you so much.
I hated to cut the mayor off, but when people, and I get it too, when people say, "Pine Bluff." It says $550 million Quapon Nation invested in this community because we knew it would work. And we have a million people a year walk through those doors. We couldn't survive on social security checks. It's odd that social security buildings cross the street from us. But we couldn't survive on social security checks. We depend on Little Rock. There's an old movie, My Nine-Year-Old Son, it's his favorite, called Field of Dreams, "If you build it, they will come." And what's wonderful, and I'll close with this, and then I want to hear from you all. That's the reason that we're here. We want to hear from you all. Sure, there are some things that if you build it, they will come. But the nature infrastructure, we have God built for folks to come. You can't, you can't build a Bayou Bartholomew. You can't build a Lake Saracen. I mean, you can, but the birds and all that, they don't, they don't come to a man-made lake like that. So we have a tremendous amount to build on. I did one finish where I started. I'm going to read you all the rest of, some of the rest of the towns that we are already beating, just in case you're in your feelings about how we're doing. Benton, Eureka Springs, Rogers, Cersei, Texarkana, Sherwood. How about this one? Fort Smith. Anyway, there's surprises. By the way, I love the mayor of Fort Smith. I know you do, too. I feel bad about having said that, but... Our A and P tax collections are a good indication of where we are and where we're going. With a focus on nature, with a focus on building to our strengths, I want to hear from you all. And that's why you're here tonight. I know y'all didn't just come to listen. So y'all share what's on your heart. I should mention, too, I skipped right over culinary. Jennings is right here, who I'm proud to work beside at Saracen. And we have an opportunity to embrace culinary in this community. It's funny, and I keep saying I'm almost done, but I really am here. It's funny, the economy is changing in a way that retail has become different. And people are spending money on experiences in a way that they haven't before. I find myself doing that. Do I need another pocket knife? Do I need another necktie? You run out of things to buy. So you spend your disposable income on experiences. We're depending on it with our business. But it is a robust time for unique culinary experiences. And the history and the stories and the cuisine that are associated with the culture and the community that was built and is still here is something that we have to stand on, too, as well. So I'm proud that there is a Diamond Chef chapter with a sold-out event here, that we have become a culinary hub. And as I'm fond of saying, the best restaurant in Little Rock is in Pine Bluff, so. The Red Oak. So y'all help me out here. Who's got some thoughts? Who's got some ideas? Who's got some questions? How can we answer them?
I have some thoughts. Let me confess that when the mayor asked me about being her chief of staff, I wanted to scream and say, "No, I am not coming." Because I've lived here for five years, but I realized now my eyes had not been opened. And through this process, it's like, I think it's about opening the eyes of people that they cannot see. I told the mayor, "There's a park right across behind where I go to work every day." I didn't see it, too, yesterday. When I saw it, I'm like, "Oh, my God, what a beautiful park." I'm like, "How did I miss that?" Then I went downtown and I walked those four blocks. And I saw that beautiful mural and that park and what was building that DVR park. I'm like, "Oh, my God, it's like I never seen it before." And when I saw it, it's like I didn't want to leave. The mural is so beautiful. It's almost like you could walk into it. And so I think part of it is about branding. Because these town halls are about our concerns, but they're also about what we see as positive. And what I find, because I'm enthusiastic, it's, you know, it's contagious. And when I say something to people, they say, "You know, hadn't thought about that. Library, beautiful." I think it's about the way we have to start talking about it. And when I do, just ordinary people say, "You know, I haven't seen that." Something to branding, the way we tell our story. I said something to someone just yesterday. I said, "They were talking about the crime." I said, "But did you know we're in day 428?"
433.
428, 433. 433, see, I'm behind.
Well, I gave them the wrong number, but they bought it anyway.
That's the duty of being trusted like you are. We just go, huh?
Yeah. And they said, "Really?" Literally, the countenance changed on their face when they thought about crime in Pine Bluff. I said, "You know it's changing?" And so when I told them what GVI is, they said, "I didn't know about that." What that says to me is that we've got to do a better job.
And Chief, you didn't finish. Day 433 of what?
433 days where we have not had a juvenile homicide in Pine Bluff. Ain't that good news? 433 days. Not to mention the GVI staff, it's like people are on fire. Even in our departments, it's like something is awakening in this city. And so let's not despise small beginnings. It's a small group, and I'm watching our council and our mayor come together on one accord as I listen to them from week to week. And they're communicating better. They're working together. It's amazing. So I think we've got to tell the story, rebranding it. And us here, and what do you call it, infiltrating? You infiltrating. And I'll close with this. I am so excited. I am so glad I'm here. I almost want to apologize to the mayor for wanting to tell her, "No, I am not coming." Because literally every day, I say, "Oh, Mayor, I want to work in economic development today." I'm like, "Oh, can I go work in code enforcement?" I'm like, because it is so much going on. This is a great city. This is a great, great city. So I think it's going to be the way we tell our story, the way we make comparisons. These little bitty things make a big difference. It doesn't sound like much. But if we are out, what did you call that? If we're out doing Texarkana, that is growing. Their MSA has grown by about 50,000 in the last 40 years. How do I know? I was on their board. About 20 years ago, we were at 100,000 MSA. It grew to 150,000 because we were branding, we were telling the story. We had issues. And so we're looking at how to do land banks. I mean, code enforcement is just so exciting now. So something is happening in this city. Tell the story. Find somebody tomorrow and say, "You know, we're at 433 days without a youth homicide in Pine Bluff." Ain't that good news? Tell the good news.
The good news. Hey, I'll give you another statistic. And we're not, we're not here to have statistics class. I have dear friends from Eldorado, Arkansas, saw one of them there two ago. Former Speaker Matthew Shepard, who I know is a friend of the mayor's as well. I'm going to pick on Eldorado for a minute, and they're doing a lot of things right in Eldorado. We have almost five times the A and P tax of Eldorado, despite all of that investment in the Arch District and everything else. So if they could have a vision in Eldorado to begin, and they're growing, and we're proud of them, but if they can have a vision to grow with about one-fifth of what we already have, what the heck is stopping us? Great song.
Good evening. My name is Sadie Hughes.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for the invite. And I want to say thank you to the mayor for setting up this forum and giving a genuine effort to improving the city. Like anything else, when you first enter into a city, how that city looks says a lot about whether or not you're going to come back. I've been to many places, and, you know, if the city is dirty, if the city is blighted, if there are a lot of houses that need to be... if there are a lot of houses that need to be repaired or whatever, you know, it gives me a feeling to come or to not come back. So, I think that's part of the tourism as well. So, our infrastructure, as well as since I've been coming in and out for the last couple of years, you know, the codes for housing are, are much less than what I've seen in other areas. That should be addressed. As far as the, as bringing people in, I vaguely remember as a kid that we used to have fishing tournaments here on the lake, and that brings a lot of revenue into the city, because like the bikers, the fishers spend a lot of money.
They do.
Fishermen spend a lot of money.
They do.
And so, I would like to see that, and I'd like to see something more for our youth, for our, for our babies. You know, I've been to several of the town halls, and we tend to focus on the teens and the adults, but I'd like to see more engagement in our babies, because that's where it all starts. If we can start at that age, we don't have to work so hard when we get to the teenagers and the adults.
I just want to reinforce what you're saying. We'd not really considered code enforcement as a function of tourism, but it is a big part of perception. I mean, I'm, I'm taking notes here, and it's a big part of our report, which we're in the final stages of, but obviously, we were holding it for feedback. My wife laughs, I have a kind of a little life rule that you can always tell, this is not always true, but it's generally true. When a business is struggling, and you see this in Little Rock a lot, because the yard out front isn't mowed all that often, that's one of the first things you can kind of start skipping if things are, maybe you got a dress shop, or, I don't know, a card shop or whatever, things are tight, the first thing you do is you cut out on that man you've been paying to come mow the yard, and the same thing can be said, I think, too, of a, of a city. And that's a great point. Tourism, what we're doing ultimately is the perception of the city, because people don't want to visit something that is not perceived as well. And if you fix tourism at the same time, part of what you're doing helps fix economic development, it helps fix a whole bunch of other things. And so, I've been careful not to bleed over, you know, somebody told me once, "Stay in your lane, bro." I mean, we've been trying not to bleed over, but I think you make a wise point that some references to robust code enforcement, just to keep this beautiful city beautiful, is important.
It's funny she said that. I had on my list to speak about Cherry Street. You know, if you're older like me, the first thing you say is, "Remember when Cherry Street", and then you talk about the beautiful houses that were on Cherry Street. And I believe, well, I know, growing up, my parents and grandparents, we used to come to Pine Bluff just to drive down Cherry Street to look at the beautiful houses. There's some houses on Cherry Street that's 100-plus years old, and I'd love to see tourism get back to the point where they're driving up and down Cherry Street to look at those beautiful houses. I think there's a, I was just going to mention that. And I heard Chief Campbell, she said something, you can feel something's going on. How many of you attended Mayor Flowers' swearing-in ceremony? Few of us, right? You could feel something in that room that was different. You know what identified it with? She put our Lord and Savior first. And I told her this, and that, to me, is the root of what's driving the change of us moving ahead. I told her, I said, "I felt like at the end of that swearing-in ceremony, we should have had an invitation, an altar call." And I want to applaud you for not being ashamed to put him first. What's on your mind?
And I want to apologize for starting 10 minutes late, but we still got you.
You know, I used to work for Saracen, and I loved it when people would come in and I would look on their driver's licenses and see where they were from. The only thing I had with them, they wouldn't build enough rooms in the new hotel they're building. We have to have 900 rooms in one hotel to have a Grand Lodge Elks convention, and that's what I wanted. And they said, "We're not in the hotel business like that, James. We-"
Not yet.
"-we're in the gambling business." Well, they paid for that hotel in three years, you know? So, they can afford to do what they're doing now with the hotel and the expansion that they're doing now. I think we have to have a new attitude. I, remember the Patti LaBelle song, you know, "Got a New Attitude"? You got to have a new attitude about Pine Bluff. When I moved here about 10 years ago, and I came from San Diego, California, probably one of the most beautiful cities in the country. I was driving up through Little Rock, and I had a problem with a tire, and I stopped at a Pep Boys', and the guy looked at my credit card when I was paying for the tire, and he said, "You're from Crime Bluff instead of Pine Bluff." And I've never been so angry, as that's one of the most times I've been angry in my life, because it was a city I had just moved to. By choice, I came to Pine Bluff, because I saw some of the beautiful places that people were living here in Pine Bluff, and I lived in San Diego, and I was paying an $1,800-a-month house note, and my house didn't look like some of these houses in Pine Bluff. I mean, these long, old, beautiful brick things that some of my cousins lived in here. So, I had a new attitude, and I was out cutting my grass one day, and my city councilman comes up, and we started talking, and he found, I was a former city councilman, and, you know, he said, "Well, you got to get rested and ready, James, and, and get that contagious attitude going on." And that's what I like about our mayor, too. I've gotten involved, and I serve on a library board here, I served on the, a public safety board with chief here, and our mayor knows that she doesn't know everything, but she knows how to go out and get people who know things. And she put people in place to help her to realize what the problems are. And so, now we've identified the problems, and now we have to share that new attitude, that contagious attitude about, there are some good things, Carlton, about the old days. You know, I had the Elks too, I'm the head of the Elks here, and Jimmy can tell you, they brought many, many of those top blues artists right here in this town. So, there are some good things about the old days, but I think, I'm with you, I think we need to look toward the future-
Yes, sir.
-of what's going on here. And I thank Saracen for all they've done. I love it that they've increased our tax base here in Jefferson County, so they can keep on coming here, dumping their money to us here in Jefferson County and go home. Thank you.
That grandma effect, they just leave some of the money. This is not about Saracen, although I am proud of what the Quapaws have done, they believed in Pine Bluff, they believed in me enough to give me a job, which was crazy. But most of our customers do come from the Little Rock area. I was proud to work with you for a long time. I will tell you, a lot of those driver's licenses, and we see them, and this is important for the folks who work in tourism, a lot of those driver's licenses that we're seeing, and I want y'all to know this in the room, are not just from Little Rock or Sherwood or Benton or Bryant. Biggest jackpot, by the way, in state history was nearly a million dollars. It was won by a fellow from Hot Springs, which is kind of crazy. Some of our most valuable customers financially, but to me, some of our most important, are folks who come from what I call casino culture, states who have long had gaming, like Louisiana and Mississippi. And I liken that to, if you drive past the grocery store right by your house, way across town to the other grocery store, that's the ultimate compliment, because you're inconveniencing, inconveniencing yourself for a product you prefer. And we have some tremendous customers from Mississippi who drive past the Greenville Casinos, drive past Harlow's, drive over that bridge, and nearly two hours to see us here, and the same from folks from Northeast Louisiana. And when the hotel's complete in November, we will make a strong play for Jackson and even the Dallas market, because what we have is such a high level of product. The only Kobe restaurant in the Southeastern United States, the highest wine spectator rating anyone in Arkansas has ever been given. We have built it probably beyond where we needed to be. You're right, we are in the gambling business, but that subsidizes all of the luxuries we're able to afford our customers, and you're known by what you're associated with. So, that's why we give away Corvettes and Mercedes and $80,000 pickup trucks. And I wouldn't count us out on hotel rooms. I suspect we're going to have 320-some-odd rooms, and realize very quickly, it's going to be time for another tower. So, I'm not here to make any announcements, but hang, hang with me, we'll get you for Elks.
Carlton.
My good friend.
Yes. Michael McCray, Economic Community Development, Cultural Development Specialist. I just really, I wanted to go on record with this town hall meeting. I want to back up to something that Mayor Flowers had just said, and she started to talk about the investment that Saracen has made in our community, and when you start to see that as a, you know, probably the largest economic development project in the state, then I also want to talk about the impacts. I mean, we're on Saracen, Lake Saracen, which abuts our downtown, which abuts our cultural district, and we've got an economic impact study that says that that could be 180, 200 million dollar investment in downtown. And then, right catty corner from that, we have the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff, which, if you look at some of the stats in terms of, it's been underfunded by $330 million. So, we've got, it's almost like a, if you look at it kind of like a mall, we've got these anchor tenants that are huge investments that we can use to build, to attract other tenants and other visitors. So, I just want to say that it's, when I look at downtown Pine Bluff, when I look at the lake, I see a billion dollars. I see a billion dollars, and I think that we just need to all go get that money. And partly, one of the things, and I really want to go on record with this, is because a lot of times when people talk, talk about UAPB, they seem to think of it as a UAPB problem or a, the UAPB alumni problem, or sometimes maybe an HBCU problem. No, it's the city. We're all missing out. If UAPB gets underfunded, it impacts our entire community. So, again, I say that we need to go, we need to bring all those resources to bear, and I think that we're in, we're in a perfect season. And then, my final point is, ultimately, tourism is about the power of story, and we've got to tell our story the right way.
So, Michael, you said something about UAPB that we've spoken about, and I've long thought about. This, y'all probably won't agree with this. Homecoming is critically important. If y'all will allow me a dumb analogy for a minute, I think part of the, you may recall me before she asked me if I would do this, she said, "You're a hunter, right?" I said, "Oh, yeah, mostly dove." Follow me here, give me just a minute to, to get where I'm going. I don't know if anybody in this room has any friends that are hunters or you're a hunter, but dove hunting, I told a friend of mine the other day about dove hunting, a guy from New Jersey, he said, "You hunt a symbol of peace?" I said, "We do. We don't think about it that way." The funny thing about dove hunting, most people that hunt dove, hunt opening day. I have a dear friend from BBR, Arkansas, it's his Christmas, he hunts opening day, doesn't hunt any of the other days. We just hunt dove opening day. I don't understand it, I'm guilty of it, I always hunt opening day of dove season and don't hunt the rest of the season. So, I don't know what I'm talking about. UAPB is not just about homecoming. Just like dove season, which I'm guilty of, I only hunt the first day, opening day. But it's like we give thought as a community, we think about UAPB because they're here. You know, one of my dearest friends at work, Henry Linton's father, played a huge role at that school, and, and we could go on and on about all the people who have had incredible influences because of UAPB. But it seems like when we start talking about the money, we only think about UAPB one weekend a year, homecoming. But if you think about it, there's all kinds of opportunities there beyond just homecoming. Homecoming's great, please don't think I'm discounting it, but you can dove hunt on more than just opening day, and we can pay attention to the economic impact of UAPB more than just homecoming. I hope that dove thing makes sense. Final thing I want to say about UAPB, somebody challenged me to do this one time, and I did it. I call it the Pine Bluff diaspora. If you ever go to Chicago, wear a UAPB hat. See how many times you get stopped walking down the street. I cannot tell you how many conversations I've had on airplanes and in airports and-
Conversation days.
Exactly. You don't meet many people who go, "Oh, I know Little Rock. Oh, yeah, yeah." And if they do, they ask about Bill Clinton or something, everybody knows Pine Bluff. If you think about that, I mean, and they've all got a family member from here or a friend from here. That's why I don't want to focus on the past, because they're from here, they're not here now. But think about UAPB more than just homecoming, and that's something we've considered in our report, too. And that's something that they can do, and that's something we can help them with together. I don't want to make Razorback versus Golden Lion comparisons, but the city of Fayetteville, for a long time, would have caved in on itself without that university. It was all they had, and they've done a great job with it, and they've grown. But I will tell you that they're not growing nearly as fast as the other cities around them, because there's a lot of things they could be doing better. It's not a shot at Fayetteville. I mean, everybody, if anybody watches this on YouTube, they're going to be like, "That dude hates every town but Pine Bluff." No. You can't build a town around a college, but it can sure be one heck of a support beam to stand you up, and I think we have opportunities with UAPB.
You didn't raise your hand?
Oh, this is like an auction, man. You raise your hand-
Yeah, you got to say something.
Councilman, we'd love to hear from you.
Can I mention, too, that I've been in all the town hall meetings, and this is the third time I've heard it said that UAPB is more than about homecoming. This is the third time.
Anybody else talk about doves?
Huh?
Nobody else talked about dove season, though, right?
No, no, they didn't talk about that. What's on your mind?
I was turning.
Oh, oh.
I just want to piggyback on what you said about UAPB, and I don't know how many people are more aware, and I just recently found out that UAPB is not funded by the state for its infrastructure. They fund Fayetteville to make sure their buildings are nice, their campuses are nice, but there is no line item budget for UAPB in the state of Arkansas. The support UAPB gets is from the students that enroll there. If the student enrollment goes down, the funds go down, the buildings go down, and we have all the, the challenges that they face because there's no money. So, we as a city have to support our colleges and universities. I was at one of the mayor's speeches when she talked about how she traveled the state, and she looked at Conway to see, you know, what did they do? Because I went to Conway back in the 90s, and it was just a one-horse town, and now it's blooming. And they, they pride themselves on being an area with five colleges or something-
City of colleges.
Yes, city of colleges or something like that. And I don't know why we can't do the same. It just will require us to put a line item budget appropriation for UAPB to help build up that. When students come here, they have a good experience, they stay here, but when they come here and have a bad experience, they go. When students graduate high school, they leave because they hear of the challenges UAPB has. So, if we want to keep them here, we have to support UAPB.
You know, the first letter in HBCU is history, historical, and we've talked about history and recognizing history and contributions, but I want to talk for a second, if I can, this is not about tourism, but I think y'all need to know this about your mayor. Mayor Flowers, alongside others, I think a lot of credit, I think you'd agree, would have to be given to our friend Senator Linda Chesterfield, fought and fought and fought. And tell me if I'm misremembering this, but I believe Governor Hutchinson was very good to UAPB. He could have been better, but I think he was very good, and I think that we need to continue to fight that good fight, because what you're describing about buildings in disarray and fewer students and fewer funding, in business, we'd call that a death spiral. We're not there. I'm a positive person, but if you think you're going that route- But if you think you're going that route, you have to stop it quickly. It's like a stall in an airplane. There's no way out unless you get out quickly. So I hear you loud and clear. But I wanted y'all to know when she had another role, a different title, elected with the trust of the people. The mayor was a fierce advocate for funding for UAPB. And, and my friend Ken Ferguson, I believe still is playing in that role as well. But you're right, you have to fight for it.
My name is Kenneth Fisher. And one of the things that I've noticed that, that is an advantage for Pine Bluff is that, that we could take advantage of right now, is that anything that happens in Pine Bluff, we're able to, we can, can use it for, for positive image. For, for example, the casino was building the hotel. Every time I go to Little Rock or something, people say, oh, I see the casino's building a hotel. Or it looks, it looks bigger this time. Or, or if something else happens in Pine Bluff, well, I heard this happened in Pine Bluff. And so although we have a, a certain image that we're, we're building on, that we can use that, anything that we do here as a, a springboard to bring people here because they want to see wow, what's really happening in Pine Bluff. And they'll come down and see that. And I think we can use that as an advantage, especially in tourism.
So we talked about this in our first Zoom meeting. And I want to apologize to the board members who have had to work with me throughout legislative session and chaos and all the weird things that have happened at this time of the year. And I know there's other folks like Kamara who, who weathered those same storms. But we talked a little bit about expectations and how they're actually something you can lean straight into. We dealt with it in our business and there's value in it. To your point, if we were Bentonville or Rogers, where there's always a new restaurant every other day and there's a new Walton family funded initiative every corner, which is wonderful. You know, people don't say, wow, I saw that new building because there's a whole bunch of new buildings, right? When someone expects less of something, there is a soft form of bigotry in there. But I'm a positive person and you have to recognize there's value in that. You know, there's, there's an old saying about how wonderful it is to be underestimated. And they're underestimating us, not if they're looking at the numbers, but they're underestimating us and what is wonderful, even from our business's perspective. First time visitors to the casino have expectations here. We deliver here, we get credit for that much difference. And they walk away blown away. If they expected here and we delivered here, we only get credit for that much difference. You get credit for how much you over deliver on what's expected. And Jimmy's a student of history and food, and I've used this discussion with our small group before. But if I told you I was going to take you down the street to the best barbecue restaurant you ever ate at in your life, and it was really good, you'd actually walk away disappointed. That wasn't the best restaurant. I have two or three places better than that. It's true, think about it. It's the best movie I've ever seen, ever. You have to watch it. And it's a great movie and you watch it and you go, I don't know if it's the best movie I've ever. As opposed to, there's a great place around the corner, you should go eat there. Or hey, this movie, it's on Netflix, you should check it out, it's pretty good, right? That expectation game is important and we actually can use that to our advantage. So come visit Pine Bluff. What? You get here, you're blown away. We get credit for them expecting this and getting this. Sometimes it's a gift for people to not expect that, right? I don't know, another dumb analogy, I'm full of them, we'd be here all night doing this. My daughter's 13, she's already looking at cars. We gave in and let her have a phone. And my wife is real good about this. So she checks her texts and her browser history and everything. And she had looked up, I gotta tell this story. She looked up something about a bunny rabbit, like a child, the innocence of a child. And then the next one was how much does a Range Rover cost? She ain't getting a Range Rover. But if she's expecting a Range Rover and she gets anything less than a Range Rover, she's going to be disappointed. If we buy her a Mercedes, then she'd be disappointed, right? If I tell her she can expect a Hoopde and we buy her a Camry, she's going to be thrilled. We're not a Hoopde. But the power of expectations is important and we can use those to our advantage. Because the crime bluff mantra, the, the once great city that's now in disarray. I hate when people talk about the story of the phoenix who came from the ashes. Well, this isn't ashes. Look at these numbers I just read you, right? But use those expectations to your advantage. So when you hear about the third best bird watching place, right? When you hear about this casino that's outperforming one that's been in business for 120 years in the tourist capital of our state, when you hear about all this history, people go, huh. And as I started with, even locals, I don't know. You come here, you see it, you're blown away, you tell your friends. That's what happens. You go somewhere, you're blown away, you tell your friends. It happens when you go to a restaurant or to a movie, or all those things I said can be overstated. So we need to be careful not to oversell ourselves too, right? But we talked about historical superlatives. And we talked about the Bayou Bartholomew. And I'm not going to go too much into that, but we have a tremendous opportunity to build what, this is not what they're calling it, it's just what I call it, the Buffalo River of the Delta. Iconic must see destination that people will travel halfway across the country to visit. If I could be so forward though, is to put you on the spot Jimmy, and give us a couple of your favorite historical superlatives that many people in this state do not know. I actually was able to share one with Senator Chesterfield the other day, who I thought knew everything and she didn't know, thanks to that list you'd sent me. Give it, just give us a few because I think it blows the room away. I mean, hit us with one or two crazy things historically that happened in this city that people may not know.
Well.
And I just put you on the spot, I realize that, but I knew you could do it. Give us the MLK story that I didn't know.
Well, Dr. Martin Luther King's only presentation in Arkansas was at UAPB in 1958, when he came down to visit with the Little Rock Central students. But there are plenty of other superlatives in the town. When you watch television, for instance, and you see slow motion, that was invented by someone from Pine Bluff, Freeman Harrison Owens. And as a matter of fact, if you listen to a talking, if you hear a sound on a movie, that is because of Freeman Harrison Owens. If you were into the British invasion of the early 60s that helped to transform rock and roll and American music, that was fueled by someone from Pine Bluff who all of the great rock and roll groups from England, the Beatles, the Rolling Stones, the Animals, they all credited Big Bill Brumsey, who was from this area, from Jefferson County. We have the honor of having, what, the archery, we were the archery capital of the country.
In Pearson.
In Pearson, that's right. So the superlatives in this area just go on and on and on. We mentioned Bayou Bartholomew, but we are within, we are within 15 miles of three of the longest bayous in the world. So there's much to build on and much to inform our own public about. You know, so much of this is about trying to tell the world to come here, but so much more of it is about trying to educate our very own people in our community so they can walk out with pride and, and with a sense of gravitas because I came from a place that meant something.
That's right. It's what I talk about looking in the mirror, sometimes that's where the problem is. Thank you. I want y'all to hear from him because he makes me feel better even, right? And there's a lot of cities would trade places with us. That's gotten me through life sometimes when I'm having a bad day. I look at a fellow, I feel a little sorry for him, maybe give a guy a dollar on the street. We ain't that guy on the street, by no means.
I just wanted to respond to something about funding. Higher ed funding and even education funding is often very different from what people think it is. And yes, you have different formulas and streams of funding for different universities. And the same way that we would like a whole lot more capital improvement funding, and I forgot the terminology, but basically to care for and keep our facilities, not healthy, but maintained. I think, and I think it's some kind of maintenance terminology. But the bottom line is you would be surprised that universities like Arkansas Tech fought a long time and wanted the formula change to benefit them more than the way that at the time it benefited UAPB. And one thing that a lot of people don't understand about the funding of and support for University of Arkansas, is a lot of what you see in the development there comes from donors, it comes from alumni. And so what you, what you really do is if you compare the incomes of donors as well as the giving patterns of alumni, as well as the number of alumni, it's going to be very different, as well as corporate giving. So a lot of what you see has very little to do with what the state gives or even what the feds give, has to do with what people give. And that's where sometimes the imbalance comes in and the conversation about disparities in wealth, disparities in health, and then what it has meant for us to experience the downturn and the divestment and the decay and the lack of retention, as well as the lack of attraction and recruitment of people to come and move here. So it, it, I think that there is a conversation that can and should be had about state support of UAPB in particular because we know about the underfunding, okay? And what people also don't understand about the underfunding, and that goes back to, you know, that goes back to a, an educational infrastructure that then attracts people to come here, not only to go to school, but to stay, to start businesses, other related businesses developing to support the community and support the university. All of those things matter, just like it has mattered for University of Arkansas, just like it has mattered for UCA. But the bottom line is the, the investment and the funding and the fairness and the justice and, or in, rather injustice that we have read about recently has not only happened from 1987 to present, it has happened since the inception, the very need for our HBCU, which now is a beacon of culture and a beacon for education. So there's a lot that could be said about UAPB and funding and support, but I think that I'll, I'll culminate with this. What we do have right now is a city with, as you've heard several times, that many other cities would trade places with. Most cities in Arkansas do not have animal control department, do not have inspection and zoning, code enforcement, and all of the 17 fully staffed or mostly staffed, not necessarily fully staffed, but well-staffed departments that we do. And then another five or six independent commission-led, city-funded departments. But we have that. We have leadership, we have people, we have infrastructure. There should be a boatload more of support for UAPB from this city and partnership between the city and the university. And I have pledged that. The current interim chancellor has pledged that and we are working toward that as we speak. But even more importantly, all three candidates for chancellor made the same pledge. And now it's time to put the work and the effort behind it because we cannot, we can no longer wait for anyone to come save us, to make up for lost money, time. There's a reason that UAPB was underfunded, it wasn't an accident. And so spending a lot of energy around trying to get that $350 million back, which we should spend some. But what we have to realize is that whether we get it through a lawsuit or negotiated a deal with the governor, it still has to go through the legislature. The same legislature that is dismantling history and all manner of funding around diversity, equity and inclusion. So the expectation that that same legislature would, because it's right, support handing over almost half a billion dollars. And what's really owed is more than 350 million. Or even going to the feds, because there's underfunding there too. So yes, we fight, we raise awareness, we keep that going. But we invest in ourselves and not focus so much on charity and righting wrongs when we can do that for ourselves.
Wait for the microphone for a second, we all want to hear you.
Vandal's coming.
Okay, I, my question is twofold. First of all, I want to acknowledge about the Bayou Bartholomew. I think that's a fantastic, terrific idea to capitalize on that statistic of it being the longest bayou in the world. And my question is, when do you expect it to start construction or the development? That's what we're talking about. And the second question is the funding. Do we have a separate budget for that or taxes or what's going to, how is that going to be funded?
So I'm going to give you just a baby answer. And I'm going to ask Mr. Fisher if he could speak a little bit about it, if you're comfortable. My baby answer is the reason that I'm so excited about that project is it's not one where we're on our own. Now, we spent the last hour and 15 minutes saying we can do all this on our own. And with God, we can do anything on our own, right? But it sure is nice to have some help. And so I, I know Kenneth's on the, the board that's handling that, Bill Jones is heading that up. I know that we have access to all sorts of funding sources that are different, right? Whether they be federal or game and fish. I think there's certainly opportunity for some community involvement within that. One of the things that's nice about it is skin in the game matters. I think it does. But why don't you give us what you can share? I don't know what's public, what's not, what's, what's being developed, what's real. But you can certainly give a better answer than I can. It's unfair for me to try because you deserve the best answer and I think it could come from him.
All right. Bayou Bartholomew is really a big project that is, is going forward right now. It is, it's under the umbrella of game and fish right now, but there's going to be a lot of players in the, in the end product. And Pine Bluff is, is going to be a big part of that also because it's based here. The, the, the starting point is based here. For your question, and when are we going to get started? You will start seeing dirt moving within the next month or so because we're already at that point, whereas they're going to be, where, where you will see it is over there on where 530 and Hazel Street are start, are connect. There's going to, they're starting a, a parking area there where they're going to be building that out where there's a nature, there's a nature trail already there. There's a lot of property that's already been purchased for it. And there's a lot of different funding sources that will come along with the, the full project. So your quick answer is. So your quick answer is we're starting, we're starting right now with it going. And as you see in the next year or two, you'll see things popping up, and you'll hear more news about it. But it's a really big project. A lot of people are excited about it. And I think Pine Bluff is gonna be very, will benefit quite a bit, tourism and everything coming from that Bayou Bartholomew project.
Tooth house real quick. You, you play into your strengths. That's a strength that we have naturally, that we can play into. And number two, you saved me, because I've always said I have no credibility with regard to a question when somebody asks me when construction on something's gonna start. Because for two years, I said that hotel was gonna start. But now it turned out we built it bigger and we're building it better. So I think Bayou Bartholomew is gonna start right when you said it is, and I think it's gonna end up better than we expect. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I just wanna piggyback on what was said about UAPB and what its contribution to this city. I think that the movement always already is afoot with the investment that the city has done along University Drive. We have a nice, beautiful welcome sign that the city put there, and we have a banner program there. We're working hard. We did the 150, and I'd like to thank Ms. Sherry there. She helped with the banners, and you see some up and down Main Street. So we're gonna do more to connect UAPB to the whole effort of promoting Pine Bluff, and Pine Bluff is gonna do more to support the, the university. And I'm looking forward to our Economic and Community Development Department to do a lot of work around the university. We've already done some work. I don't know if you drive down University, you'll see some benches and, and some things that they put there. But I'm really excited about trying to inspire. And I've gotten some calls from people that once lived here in Pine Bluff, and they said, what can we do to invest in Pine Bluff? So look forward to an effort that investors will become to build on what we've done. And, you know, further south of things with the casino. I think the casino does add a, a new dimension to our economic development, but I think people are gonna start to come back to invest.
I agree. I know Angela has a question, and she's a great place, because we're, we got about 10 minutes left. And I wanna say something first. I wanna tell y'all something about the casino, and again, this is not about the casino, but I wanna tell y'all something about the casino that really doesn't have anything to do with the casino. Our biggest contribution to the community is that we have 70% of our workforce living in Jefferson County. And I wanna say a couple things real quick, just so y'all know this. The average dealer made $84,000 last year. Top earning dealer made 120-some-odd thousand. Slot attendants make 125,000. But I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about the fact that we by our own internal policy, not state law, do not allow anyone who works in Saracen, whether you push a lawnmower, flip a hamburger, or deal cards to gamble there. Because we firmly believe that the biggest and longest-lasting contribution that that property can provide to this community is 500, 600, 700 homes who are doing better now than they were yesterday. And I know a little bit about addiction, and I know that sometimes the bartender turns into an alcoholic. And if our folks are just gambling away their paychecks, we have accomplished nothing except paid a bunch of taxes and probably hurt a bunch of businesses and families along the way. So if we do nothing else, we will improve hundreds of homes and home lives because of that. And so people talk about, oh, it's great, and the visitors, and I know this is tourism, but I want y'all to know that, because I have no doubt many of our customers, or many of our employees are some of the other casinos in the state's best customers. But at least we're not putting it right in front of their faces. Angela challenged us early on to stay actionable and on point, and not just have talk, and be a central point. I know I got her attention when we talked about search engine optimization one week. But we've got about 10 minutes left. You think you can bring us home?
I'm not gonna let Carlton bother me today. I'm not gonna let you do that to me, because I've been sitting here. Anyone who knows me a little bit, I certainly have a disposition towards action. Would you agree?
Yes.
Just a little bit, okay. I'm not patient, which has its pluses and its minuses. So for me, what I wanted to say, it, I am always pleased and happy to serve and lend my knowledge, my connections, my whatever. It is hard when I listen to the ideas without the action. And so as I was sitting in this room, and I was like, I am gonna get through this whole meeting, and I'm not gonna say one word. I have been fidgeting like nobody's business. But what I wanted to say was, there's a young, the young lady who spoke about youth activities. There is so much going on here that people don't know about, and I find that to be the biggest frustration for me. In one of my jobs, I am a Realtor, and I am very proud that I've actually relocated people here. And I generally provide them with a list of things and places to go. So the Arts and Science Center is a great place for kids' activities. When we look at UAPB, obviously, we know football is their driver, but they have basketball, they have women's teams, they have soccer. They're in hockey, baseball, and softball season right now. There are plenty of things for kids to do now. We need to have parents or people in our communities who set up trips or whatever, like after-school programs, who take them to the baseball games and things of that nature. You have to build that energy and excitement. But my to-do list action item for people here is, what are you sharing on social media that is positive about Pine Bluff? And so we all know that if it bleeds, it leads, it's the moniker of the news, right? So I'll, I'll give the analogy, if the police department shares that something bad happened, you could look at that share count, it's off the charts, 400, 200. If they, if they are doing a community activity, you might get 20 shares, right? So we're all responsible for what we share, what we say, what the positive nature is. So all I really wanted to say was, I am remaining cautiously optimistic that we don't just put forth a plan that has ideas, but is actionable. And yes, I know that search engine optimization is a thing, but we need the platforms that are, the websites of our community to have information on them that is positive. So for example, if, if I wrote something that was positive about your entity on my website, if each, I think I counted, one or two people left. I think I was at 23 people. If 23 people did that, that's 23 positive stories. So in order for Carlton's search engine optimization to work, the search engines have to have keywords that are positive to search for. Do you understand what I'm saying? So the effort that you need to make, it's not great. It doesn't cost a lot of time or energy. It doesn't even cost money, depending on if you write a post, right? Or if you, or your job has access to a website, you just need to do it. And so my goal is to say, to share something that you can walk out of this room and do, right? Because I think that's the most powerful thing. Is, is, well, is to, is to do it, is to actually say the positive things, share the positive story. The Arts and Science Center, they have a sneaker ball fundraiser tomorrow night. That's something fun and different to do. Are you going? I'm going. I gotta bedazzle my sneakers, because I forgot, I thought it was next month, but now I gotta do that tomorrow. So I think it's just a matter of us participating and supporting and going to things, and that's all I wanted to say.
So we're gonna do a whole lot more than call to ask for search engine optimization. And what I will tell you is I know our mayor is a woman of both faith and action. And what we are going to provide are a number of actionable steps. We had to have a couple of tent pole initiatives, like the Bayou and like the historic superlatives. That's what I always call them, because you don't get a whole lot of credit for being better, but you get a lot of credit for being best. But I, I think we have a rich foundation to build upon, and we'll go from there. We got one more question, right under the wire.
Vandal's coming.
Good evening. My name is Tiki Han. I'm Director for Youth Development at UAPB. My question is about, you know, she was talking about partnerships with UAPB. And I know the hotels, they're private entities and everything, but is there anything that can be done, or is being done, about the price gouging that goes on during homecoming? Several of our alumni and supporters, they talk about, oh, they got their, their hotel early. And then when the, it's announced, when it's, everybody knows when homecoming is, they get canceled, and when they try to rebook, the prices are three times higher.
They get canceled?
Oh, yes. People have gotten there, because like, you know, it, it's, it's out now when homecoming is, but all the hotels may not know. People get their rooms, and then when it becomes like widely known, hotels will cancel them, and they will have to rebook. And when they rebook, it's three times higher. Because I've asked people, why are you staying in Little Rock? Oh, Pine Bluff is too high. I said, what do you mean Pine Bluff is higher than, Pine Bluff hotels are higher than Little Rock? Yes, they price gouge during homecoming. And I know they're private entities, but is there in, anything? Can they partner with certain hotels and have a, have a basic rate that's not three times more? So, so alumni not staying in Little Rock?
I, I think I know what the mayor's thinking, which is if you've got a confirmed reservation in a hotel, I don't know how they can cancel you. It may not be what you're thinking, but I think that's what you're thinking.
That's why I said they're canceled.
Yeah. I think there's something there that ought to be looked at. We've talked about hotel policies before. I will say, for what it's worth, and this is no, this is no bomb of Gilead for this problem. It's not unique to this community. I was in Fayetteville for a football game not too long ago, and I paid $1,200 for a room that wasn't worth $120, because the alternative was to stay in Missouri or Fort Smith. And, yeah. Yeah. I was disgusted for $1,200. Yeah. Airbnbs are good.
Carlton, are you gonna wrap us up?
I am.
By sharing what we heard?
Yeah.
May I do that?
I actually, if I could, I'd like for you to. You, you'll keep us on point and on task.
I couldn't do that.
And I think you kept better notes than we have. I just wanna tell y'all, thank you for putting up with me, listening to my stories, and I am honored, again, that you asked me to be a part of this. So on behalf of our entire organization, this has been incredible. It was not a tough assignment, because there's a lot to start with here. Suzie had the toughest assignment. But it was not a tough assignment, because we have so much to begin with. We didn't have to meet very many times, because we knew what we were doing.
This is what I heard. We need to brand better. We need to ramp up our code enforcement. We need to talk about impact, improve our beautification. Youth, we need to have something for younger children. Talk about the impacts that we already know. Tell our own story. Tell your story.
Because if you don't, someone else will.
UAPB is more than just about homecoming. Oh, little-known facts, share them. Oh, did you know that Watson Chapel High School has 232 people in their ROTC? They're the second-largest in the State of Arkansas. I learned that today. Share, share, share. We have to educate our own, those that are around us in our high schools, our friends, our family. Put some skin in the game. Make an investment. Oh, let's see. Oh, connect UAPB to the bigger picture. Uh, action, 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 action.
And mow your lawn.
And more action. That's it.
Thank you all so very much, and we look forward to delivering our report, for the broader report to the mayor. I wanna emphasize again, one more time, what she has done is admirable, because many new administrations at every level of government come in, and they, they got their list. And she's got a list. That's what she got elected on. But she's letting us help with that list. You know, the state's motto is regnet populis, the people rule. They made a decision with Mayor Flowers, and she's made a decision to allow us to have input in the, in the triggers and levers that she will be pulling for our community. So thank you all for being here this night, tonight. It's been an honor, and thank you.
Wait, wait. Need to make two announcements. On Sunday at 3:00 PM, the very last Town Hall Meeting for Faith and Community Engagement will be here at 3:00 PM. And then finally, the mayor's State of the City will be March 31st, Monday night, March 31st, at 6:00 PM at the Pine Bluff Convention Center. So Sunday, 3:00 PM, Faith and Community Engagement will be the last Town Hall. And then Monday, March 31st, at 6:00 PM, the State of the City address by the Honorable Vivian Ladita Flowers.
Thank you all.